Okay, call to order at 7:00 PM. Tracy's not here tonight, so roll call. Tracy Moncausse, yeah, sent. January Rossett, present. Rachel Witsett, here. Robert Canal.
Present.
Craig Sims.
Present.
Steve Vitalek.
Present.
Planet Trader.
Present.
Attorney Addis.
Present.
And Attorney Kelly.
Present.
Public hearings, we have none tonight. Approval of agenda. Motion. Actually, I do want to make a change to old business just in order. Number two will be number one. Number one will be number two, so we can...
Motion to approve changes?
For second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Any opposed? Public comments on agenda items? Okay, approval of the minutes from March 5th, 2019. Did anybody get a chance to take a look at those? Good?
I have a change.
Okay.
Item 11 would be housing that is not available.
Anything else?
No.
Motion to approve minutes as suggested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, communications and correspondence. I just want a note to the board that we did have a resignation from Ms. Mary Ann Frazel-Lions after our last meeting, so we are working on filling that position. Did anybody else have anything else that they'd like to add there?
Did she do it in writing?
She did. I'll forward that to you guys if you want.
It's just part of the... ...by...
Yes. Anybody else, any communication or personal? Okay, matters for consideration, old business. Set in a public hearing for basic metals, special land use, aluminum storage of 572-50 Rosell. Discussion and action. We'll start with Planet Trader.
I have offered no objections to doing so. We did the engineering myself, didn't we, with the applicant? In the course of the last 30 days, the applicant is putting together pieces of the site plan that are required for the engineering review, and all the other planning-related zoning items are in order.
Question. Before we set a public hearing, don't we need to see what's under discussion? Because once we approve the public hearing, we've got to have that ready to the public, right?
Yes, of course. We have, we've taken a look at the set of plans, we're waiting for an amendment to those, and at that time, you guys, between now and the next week, you guys will get a review from both myself and the engineer on that.
We shouldn't review it before we set the public hearing? Or we can make changes or objections?
You can, yeah, because ultimately, after that public hearing, you've had all the information and you've heard, and you've heard the public, you guys will make a decision about it, approve the site plan at that time. So at this point, we're just setting, we're just setting a public, just setting a public hearing if the applicant is requesting.
Since we're setting it without actually seeing it, that's my question.
But we would see it during the presentation next month, and then they will review in the meantime, so that we can move forward with it, how we feel. Any other questions? Did you have any? Did you guys, did you want to speak, or were you good?
We're here, Madam Chair, if you have any questions you'd like to ask.
Good?
I do have a question. I don't know if this was ever done or not done. Was a special land use ever done on the other property?
On the other property?
Yes.
Which property, on 26 Marrow?
Yes.
As far as I know, there wasn't a special land use on that property.
Isn't there supposed to be though?
There should have at that point in time, but I don't know when that was. That was sometime in the past.
So if somebody's operating without a special land use on one piece of their property under the same company, can we just do one piece?
The request is for the property on Rosell, that's the one that's before us, yes.
But I mean, there's an open violation then on the other piece of property, right?
I can't say that's an open violation, I don't know if, I don't know what the enforcement status on that is.
Okay, I think if somebody's coming to us, their other properties should be. Has that ever been done, to your knowledge?
No.
Shouldn't, if an applicant is coming to us, shouldn't their properties be in order before they come to us with another, if they have an open violation? I guess that'd be for the attorney.
I guess the question is, is it considered an open violation or a violation under your laws?
I guess that's, that's where I'm kind of confused. 26 Marrow was always a salvage yard, and this is before I could obviously, the president basically bought that parcel. My understanding is, when we bought the Tiger Escobate and the Rosell parcel, if we decided to put scrap on that, we had to get a special land use. That's why we're here. Now, 26 Marrow, and what's permitted and what's not there, I don't know.
No, I just remember the violation being there when I was sitting on it, so I'm asking if they...
Who owned the property then, do you call?
I don't know if it matters, if the property's a violation, it's a violation, right?
But if it's been cured, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, if it's been cured or what the violation was, you shouldn't, you don't even know that, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
That's why I'm asking you guys. If there is an open violation, if there is, do we continue? I guess you guys should fight out.
I think we need to look at this, if all the considerations on property is that this is a special land use for another property from the same, I understand what you're saying, the same owner, but I think we have to focus on what this property, the request for this property, and, you know, deal with that other property at another. I don't know that this is a wide path in dealing with that property, if there is an exist, I, I'm not aware, so if there is an existing problem there, I think, shouldn't we bring them together?
I guess I'd like an opinion, to know if there's an open violation, if it's a problem, should we not, before that's resolved, should we continue on with another piece?
Well, they're two separate pieces, and so I haven't seen the plans or anything of that nature, but generally speaking, if you have two separate parcels, you deal with them individually, okay? So if there's an issue with a parcel that's already there, and there's not a special land use, that would be something distinct and different than something they're trying to do on another property. I, I think you would have to consider them separately, I don't know that you could group them together, per se. I think that you'd have to look at the issues, if there are any, with the first parcel, take care of those issues or what needs to be done with it. That would be, I'd have to look into it more though, because I don't know, I don't have the parcels in front of me and I haven't seen the plans, so I really'd have to, I'd have to check it out for you.
Well, I'm guessing, I'm asking then, which property is first? The one that's in dilation, or the one that's coming before us now?
Well, I think you would deal with the one becoming before you now first, only because that's something that you would deal with as the planning commission. I think the special land use would be something that would have to be looked at to see if it is in violation, and if it is indeed in violation, then taking the proper steps to, to fix that would be the appropriate way, I think, based on the little knowledge that I have of this right now, but again, I think that that would be the appropriate way to deal with it, would be under a separate portion, a separate aspect of looking at it and saying, okay, did they get the special land use or didn't they, and if they didn't, what do they need to do to move forward to get that? That's something distinct and different than what I believe is before you on the other property. So I would say you would deal with the Rosell property first, because that's what's before you, and then figure out what's happening on the other one, to decide what needs to happen with that.
Okay, good, anybody else? Okay, motion then to set a public hearing for special land use. Anyone?
Next one?
It would be for May 7th, 7:00 PM, 2019.
Motion to approve?
For second? Second. All in favor? Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do a roll call then. Rossett, yes. Commissioner Witsett?
Yes.
Commissioner Canal?
No.
Commissioner Sims?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitalek?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed for setting a public hearing, May 7th, 2019, for special land use, 572-50 Rosell, basic metals. Okay, next up, ordinance update, including our sign ordinance, setting a public hearing for ordinance review discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Lieutenant Commissioner.
Thank you.
Planet Trader, did you want to start with the ordinance review?
Sure, as I distributed to you guys from a memo that was dated January 2nd, where we put together a summary of all the two 2018 zoning ordinance updates that were proposed. There are three items that are before us that need to, that need to have a public hearing set for them, and then also a ultimate vote by planning commission to make a recommendation to village council. The first of which is the heavy light industrial office districts, there were a number of dimensional changes, I won't go into all the details since they're in front of you. You'll see the status that's pending our approval and recommendations, so proposed actions to set a public hearing on this. We have the changes to the planned unit development overlay district that are also being proposed, and then the large one that's been hanging up there is the signs ordinance. And I believe we have the benefit of having the village attorneys here to answer any questions that you guys may have related to the proposed changes that we made.
Okay, well, so we'll start then with the questions for the attorney on regards to the sign ordinance.
My question is actually for Jeff.
Yes.
You said the ordinance is in front of us?
Mm-hmm.
Did you hand out copies?
No, I'm sorry, not copy the ordinance, the copy of the summary. I handed out a summary memo, a copy of the memo that I sent out on the 2nd of January.
Okay, I was still looking to get the final graphs of the copies that we want to put out there.
Okay, the signs, when everything was...
The signs you sent us.
That was sent, that's, I thought that was, I apologize if that was the case, I thought that was the one we were questioning, having the new...
No, the heavy light planned unit, the final graphs of those.
Okay.
And we're going with the attorney's final draft of the sign ordinance, not your...
That is correct, but, but all three were provided to you guys along, the two were provided along with the summary, so you could see the changes.
So if we could still get those?
Can still get those to you guys, absolutely.
Do you want me to ask attorney questions then?
If you have, anybody who has any attorney questions, let's do those tonight for sure, so that we have everything that we need answered and addressed with the sign ordinances.
Under prohibited signs, vehicle business signs and trailer signs is no longer in that category? Removing, using vehicles as signs?
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The vehicle business signs and trailer signs?
Yes.
Where we're using vehicles as a sign?
Okay.
Was in the prohibited, and it's not in there anymore.
Well, it doesn't necessarily go, so the way the sign ordinances now have to go is it has to be on the content, okay? So it's all content-based, it depends what it is.
A big box truck with...
Right.
A sign on it.
That's right, so you can't, you can't stop the content of what it says, and it's really not the easiest opinion in the world, because it doesn't give you, you can put it on this, but you can't put it on that. It's all based on what the content is of what you're specifying, or what you're putting the sign up for. So this is, this is kind of what they did, is they indicated what the court said, and it's the Supreme Court of the United States, so it's, this is like one of those across, they basically said you can't stop anyone from saying something, okay? Unless it gets into, obviously, crazy things, but you can't stop them from, so you can't stop the content of what it is.
Like what they had.
Yeah, and that's, so when you start talking about can you put it here, can you put it there, it all depends what it is.
So does it go against their square footage then, if they want to put it on their vehicle? That means they don't get it on their building? I mean, because you're taking and increasing the footage that you're allowing...
Right.
By throwing a banner on your vehicle, which, one, is a temporary sign, at best, and even if it's a wrapped vehicle, that you never move and leave there as a fixed object.
Exactly, and right, and there's a lot of businesses out there, I know, that put certain trucks in very strategic places, shall we say, so that everyone can see kind of their advertising and things like that, and that becomes an issue that we would probably have to look at in terms of, is it going to affect, will it affect the size of their sign? So if they have it on their box truck, does that affect what they can put on their, you know, brick and mortar? I don't know that it does, okay? I don't know that it does. It's strictly the content of it, but we have to look into it, and it's going to be on a case-by-case basis, essentially, it all depends on what it is and what it says. So that's really something we're going to have to, there is no like black and white to this, because it's based on what the sign says, that's kind of what they came down on. So...
But we can still regulate how much signage someone puts out, right?
Oh, for sure, yes, absolutely.
Which would break short of the message, is what you're thinking?
So for clarity, if Gratchit, every business on Gratchit wanted to put a box truck in front of their business with a message on there that, you know, we sell buildings, or whatever they sell, that's going to be permitted?
Can't say it's going to be permitted, no, I can't, I don't think that's going to, I don't think it's going to work. Chuck, go ahead.
Time, place, and manner restrictions are still in here, so under, under that Supreme Court case, right, you can't regulate the content, but you can still regulate time, place, and manner, so like, like you said, it could be a temporary thing, those are considered temporary signs, they're considered temporary signs, and they must still adhere to those time regulations that are in the temporary sign restrictions in the, in the ordinance.
So they have...
So they wouldn't, to answer your question, they would not be able to.
So if they have a vehicle that they're using, utilizing as a temporary sign, they would have to comply with the coming in for the request for the temporary sign?
Absolutely.
And then they have, I think it's seven or 14 days?
Yeah.
Two times a year?
Mm-hmm, that's it.
To that, so they would only, so anything that exceeds that amount of time, they've got to park that vehicle somewhere else.
Yeah, and as far as personal vehicles going back and forth, they have a logo on it, I mean, I don't know how the village is going to be able to regulate something like that anyway.
No, that's different, it's more like... Right.
But if you're talking, I got it, I got it.
Right, I'm looking for something that's just parked there for the sheer purpose of that marking.
That was just something I contemplated.
It's an anchor.
Yeah.
So it'd be a temporary sign situation.
Right.
Hasn't moved it.
It moved over, so...
Or did it?
Right, okay, so they'll be, so they're permitted, they're just not, they're being permitted as a temporary sign?
Yeah, I mean, again, there's, there's size restrictions on certain temporary signs, so maybe we have banners that can only be such a size as well, so...
So if it's on the side of a truck?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to take a look at that more directly, as, as applied to the ordinance, but a temporary sign alone would apply to that, yes.
And I guess under temporary signs, I'd want to see added the word vehicle, if we're using it as a temporary sign. It's not one of the items that recall a temporary sign, you know, banners and...
And these commercial signs are regulated slightly differently than non-commercial signs as well, so there's, we can get away with a little bit more on business or commercial related signs than we could on any other private citizen using a sign like that, or something for nonrecuniated gain, like a church.
Can, can for political reasons then, can someone park a truck and leave it there?
Again, time, place, and manner, we can, so forget, that would be a temporary sign. See, we're staying away from the content base, right, we're not even talking about whether it's political or anything, can someone put a temporary sign on the side of the truck and park it there, twice a year for the specified amount of time, if they come in and get a permit from the village?
Okay.
The issue you're always going to have is the one that drives around and parks it in different parking lots, and you end up chasing him around, trying to say that you violated our sign ordinance, and he's going to say, no, I wasn't there for this period of time, or for a long enough period of time where you can, you're always going to have that that you're going to deal with, and it's always, you know, cat chasing the tail, it's tough.
But our ordinance does cover a temporary sign on a piece of property, so if it's there, it's in violation, right?
As long as it's, it's in violation, as long as someone comes out and gives them the ticket, and it's properly served and all of that good stuff, yes.
Consider code enforcement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, would that, that would be a code enforcement, not a police matter, so it wouldn't be a, sticking a ticket on their car, correct?
Right, it would normally be, unless, as long as it's code enforcement and it's on a property, a private property. If it's on the street, that becomes your deputies.
Addresses on residential areas, it says the word reflective, do we really need to have reflective sign-in, signs on homes?
Well, the main, the main issue here was emergency services at night, so one of the things that I and L kind of struggled with in looking at this was, you know, even regulating addresses is technically a content-based regulation, because you're looking at the sign based on what it has in it, which is numbers, but it's a little ridiculous, I mean, the Supreme Court, I think, went a little too far and didn't take into account everything like this, and under this type of, under the decision that they rendered, as long as the government has a very compelling interest, and the law is tailored as narrowly as possible to accomplish that interest, it's acceptable to pass constitutionality. So having said that, we, I mean, I'm getting a little broad on your question, the reflectiveness, but anything that we regulate on addresses, I, we decided was best for emergency service purposes, so they need to be such and such a size and height, because you can't see them from the road, otherwise.
Yeah.
And moreover, at night, reflective. You get what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with it, you know, in a commercial...
Aspect of it, but not necessarily residential.
Reflective, the addresses on everybody's house.
Reflective, yeah.
And, you know, we don't state the, we don't differentiate for addresses between residential and commercial, so we're just saying all addresses have to be six inches big and reflective.
Mm-hmm, we can change it if you...
You know, we should add something for residential.
If it's going to be a hardship on the residence, I see no reason why you can't take that out then.
Yeah, exactly, and you have to get reflective, you know...
Well, we're thinking more of a curb painting, but a lot of places in New Haven don't even have that, so...
No? I mean, I know when I was in Roselle, they required at one time that you have your curb...
Yeah.
Curb painting, which was, I thought a great idea, you have to tend to put a park just in front of it, or on top of it.
Right.
Well, there were informed by the, you know, by the driveway, and you don't want to park so close to that and not get a ticket too. Under general business, here, I'll go section six, since they're not page numbered, section C. I guess I was confused on whether they can list the products they sell as part of their sign versus just the name of the sign, you know, the name of the business. So is it anything they want, just up to the square footage, or...
You're under 6C?
6C, and then which?
One wall sign shall be permitted for each tenant on an individual public entrance to building. In those cases where multiple tenants share an entrance, one wall sign would be permitted to include all tenants, one additional sign may be, oh, here, one additional wall sign may be permitted on buildings which front on two major, so is this, this is just the name of the business, it's not a list of products, right?
Correct. I, I mean, I think that's what we, we're intending, to just have a name of the business, not, you know, some sort of cat, you know, just a new business.
Oh, I don't, I haven't, I don't keep up on the village business, but is the village getting a village manager, or staying village president, or has that not been decided?
It's undecided at this point in time, I think.
Okay. They just noticed under emergency, it says village president, and if we're going to a different, if we're going to whatever, a village manager form or whatever, it'd be appropriate to what we're doing, because we're doing.
No, it's not right now.
Under F, off-site signs including billboards, it doesn't address the new digital type billboards, at least I don't, I don't see that it does. Does that need to be addressed, so that it's mentioned, yes, no?
I don't think it needs to be specifically addressed, they're still considered billboards. The fact that it's a digital content rather than a permanent type of content, I don't know that we need to differentiate, they would still abide by all the same requirements.
Well, number nine is a billboard shall not be illuminated. At some point, it must be referencing...
This was in the original, this is in the original ordinance, that was already existing, so it's up to you guys if you want to take it.
So we can, yeah, I mean, we can...
So does that just eliminate all those?
It doesn't necessarily, I mean, it all depends on if you guys want to keep it that way and eliminate those, or if you want to allow those, then we could do something that, you know, not eliminate it, and less digital in nature, we could add some language in there if you guys want to keep that available.
I mean, I'd rather eliminate them, just for the pure fact that they're disturbing, because they're, in my opinion, moving signs, and they're changing, and their brightness changes per each image they put on there, and I guess my personal experience was I got pushed off 94 by some, I saw the big flash of light, and the guy went right into my lane and pushed me off to the side. I don't think they're safe, myself, though.
That would be something, I mean, it can, it can definitely be added if you'd like, however the board would like to do it, again...
But it's not under prohibited signs?
No.
That's why I'm bringing it both ways. Here, this is not eliminate, or cannot be eliminated, so is that enough?
I mean, I don't think, probably not, I would probably want to be more specific in making sure, because someone could read that a couple different ways, so I want to be specific on the fact, if you don't want digital signs, that that be specifically written, so that there's no doubt.
And I have a friend that lives under the one on 696, his house is there, and so, I mean, he literally boarded up his windows, because as it changed, when it was just light up, and, you know, it gave a solid set of light through his window, was one thing, but when it became digital and changed constantly, he just put wood over his windows, because, you know, he couldn't block the change.
Because disco ball, it's pink, it's green, it's red, it's, you know, yeah, I could see how that would be forever going. So again, if we wanted to eliminate the digital ones, we could, I would want to specify that in the, so that there's no doubt about what we're doing, or what we want or don't want.
Does that...
I guess I'd open that up to everybody's opinion.
I guess I have a couple questions, I'm not too sure where you, like, so by digital signs, give me an example in this community of what you're referring to.
Like a digital billboard?
Like, are you talking about what's in front of the high school?
No, no, that's, well, that's in our, that's in our ordinance, that would be...
Considered a changeable message, a changeable message sign.
Okay, so...
This is a billboard.
That would mind me a bit. Oh, okay. Right.
Like you see along the expressway, or...
Is it, is the case we see?
Or there.
Okay.
If that could be utilized along 306, I don't know.
Right.
But number nine says a billboard should not be illuminated.
Yeah.
I didn't know that wording, shall not be illuminated for that type of...
Generally, shall not be illuminated, I think is, would be an older standard, that would fall to a, to a standard paper type of billboard, which you'd have lighting on at night. We do in the provision of the changeable copy signs, which are the electronic messaging boards, we, we call those out in the ordinance, and states, state that changeable copy signs can only be permitted as part of a ground sign?
Yeah.
Or located on the canopy of a gas station. So if you, if you extrapolate that to a changeable copy sign, a billboard, you could write it in there, or you could reference it to here, that it would not be permitted, because that would be on a pylon in the elevated aisle, so we are kind of covered.
Well, we also have no pylon signs.
Right, correct.
Does that exit out of all...
We have removed pylon signs from the ordinance.
Does that exit those signs out?
Not, would not exit out billboards, they, they are different in that case.
Not, would not exit out billboards, they, they are different in that case.
Then I guess if no one has any objection, I'd like to see wording to that effect. I don't know if anybody else has feelings on it.
I, I would agree.
I would agree, um. Do we? What's the zoning requirement for a billboard?
Industrial. It has to be industrial, yeah.
So it's-
There are, there are a number of requirements for the billboard in its citing, in terms of its relationship to being in an industrial district, also being so far from any residential, I'm just looking for the section here.
Okay.
Section F. Um, but they are just zone for industrial property, so in a place you would probably see one, potentially be along twenty-six mile road.
I'm not good with that, those changes. Anybody object to those types of changes?
Item six, banners, a new, or five. Banner shall not exceed twenty square feet in the area for, uh, you know, putting up a temporary banner. The cheap ones you can buy are typically thirty square feet, and, you know, they can pick them up fairly cheap, or is it twenty? I guess I'm trying to say, they have their use, you know, like a grand opening sign and, and sign, you know, banners like that. Thirty square feet is, is what you can buy off the shelf. Otherwise, a guy's gotta buy a custom one that's gonna be twenty square feet. So, I thought that number should be at least what you can buy off the shelf.
That would go to the preference of the board.
Any objection?
And that's a temporary sign?
Yeah, banners, banners are temporary, and it puts what banners can do. Banners shall not exceed a display of thirty consecutive days. Uh, only, uh, no more than two banner displays shall be permitted for any one business during a twelve-month period.
What, what were you looking for, Rob?
I was looking to bump it to, instead of twenty square feet, to thirty square feet. You know, like you go to gospel and you want to buy a grand opening sign, it's thirty square feet, that's what they sell.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, not a huge, uh-
No, it's, they're between the guy buying a twenty-five dollar sign and they have to have a three hundred dollar sign made.
Which are a reason for the twenty feet?
I don't think that's what was in the ordinance, I think it's-
It's just, that's okay.
Yeah.
I don't have any objections to that, anybody else?
Um, also, section eight there, if you can put the headers on the next page too, or put that section onto one page, so that when someone's looking at it, you know, you could, you're seeing that, trying to transmit back and forth, and then someone comes back and goes, "Well, I couldn't read it," you know, it's a flaw. Let's see four. Um, when we're requesting drawings, um, we say that they can just be handwritten. Um, I think we've moved beyond that, um, that stage of handwriting it, that the sign should be an image of what's gonna be up there. Any professional sign maker would do that, you know what I mean? Would have a professional image on it, or even if you're not a professional, you'd be doing various, uh, office or whatever, you know what I mean? I, I think it should be, not just literally printed, it should be a, a digital representation of what they're putting up there.
I have no objections to that. Anybody?
No.
Just as a point of reference, Rob, where are you at in the ordinance, you're under, your sign terms is number-
Section nine.
Yeah.
Four.
Four, okay.
Which is under, I think, B.
Section nine.
B.
B four, okay.
And then down to D.
Are there any, is there any problems with that legally, just, that's just the way it was written?
I mean, if you, if you request a rendering, and then, you know, the language would convey that, but I would imagine, like you said, any professional sign chef is gonna give you a package that's gonna include something that's been privately rendered on a computer.
Yeah, I'm just not looking for any more, you know, some guy writing it on a piece of paper on an app and like this.
We could just say digital rendering, that's probably fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, section D, the zoning administrator or designee, um, is there a place that names who the designee is, and who names the designee, and what the qualifications for a designee is, if we're not using our zoning administrator who's,
Lori?
I don't know, Lori would be qualified to per se, you know, approve the electric, electrical sign, or, uh, I just wa, I'm, I'm curious who the designee would be. It's on the bottom of that same page.
It would probably be so only you guys would assign to do that, if there was some sort of special request, that they didn't have to come in, in front of the planning board each and every time, if there were some, I don't know what it would possibly be, but it would give you guys the power to say, okay, we assigned this person as the one that can say yea or nay, I don't know that you'd ever do it, but it gives you the option to do it if you, if you needed to, rather than coming before the board altogether.
I mean, I'm not even excited about the zoning administrator doing it, but I don't want it to be handed down to some, you know, my buddy's filling in for me today type of thing.
Oh, no, I don't, and you couldn't do anything like that, it would have to be voted on and approved, but-
By council?
I think it was language that was in there prior to, that we just adopted, I don't know that, that would have been anything that we added, so you could theoretically, you can take it out if you wanted to, for sure.
I guess remove it or specify, I mean, I'd want it to be a council decision to be assigning, you know, a task to somebody else.
I'm good with leaving a designee, as far as, as maybe just be more specific as to can we-
I mean, current, currently, the zoning administrator is, is, is the building inspector.
Right.
So, maybe this gives you an option, that if the building inspector's contract ran out, or you know, or wasn't the building inspector, then council or something could designate to planner and myself, but I'd agree to the appropriate person who can make that.
Right.
Like, in this first element, C, it's, it's reviewing for zoning compliance, I mean, I would probably, the next, the next person would be the planner, myself, or a member who else was in that position. But that designee should be appointed by village council, just as they approve it.
And put a definition, definitions of what a designee is, that it's appointed by the village president, or by the village council, or whoever to be a designee.
Okay.
Because I don't know who it is. Um, flipping a couple of pages over, um, nineteen members reserve, twenty is reserved, I didn't understand why. We start here.
I have no idea, those, those were-
We start flipping the pictures?
Those were in the definitions before, Rob, but I think we left them in there, does not have to renumber everything.
No, they were in there before, but certain things, things like political, the definition of a political sign was removed.
Okay.
Um, I see what you're saying, yeah. I think, I, I, was the definition of a political sign removed because of the Supreme Court?
Yes.
Because-
That's exactly what-
Was there no definition of a political sign now?
That was what, we went into the whole content base, that was the whole, it went in all, so yeah, that would be the, the reason why it was taken out.
With, I did have a question while we were discussing political signs, is, so we can no longer limit how long they can stand, as, are they considered temporary signs, or is there any control so that they just all sit there for months?
Not for months, it's still like-
Because we took everything out, correct, there's-
But when you look at the temp, now, this is something that we really struggled with, because, um, under the definition of temporary signs, political signs themselves are exempt.
Okay.
And that's an issue, because you, it could even be inferred that we're regulating based on content simply by exempting a sign based on its content.
Okay.
Uh, which is almost contradictory, but it's, this is a weird target, this whole situation here. Uh, we don't want to tell people that they can't express their political views for as long as they want to with a, with a sign, and then at the same time try to somehow regulate it as a temporary sign. I don't have a great answer for this one.
I wonder, like, DPW is to go clean up all that junk on every street corner abandoned, after, you know, so, you know, after, so much after the election, they gave them time to get rid of it, but eventually it was trash.
I almost wonder if most homeowner thinks that those signs are temporary, just because of how they look and structure and-
Yeah.
Well, even if it's somebody's home and they're putting up a sign, I guess that's, to me, that'd be a little bit harder per se, but the ones that they just stick all over every street corner in the village, that means we can't take them down after a certain amount of time, or?
Well, again, it's still, as far as, yeah, that's, it's a difficult one, I can't, I don't have a great answer for you.
I would think that you could-
If it's not public property, then that, that, that's not exempted, okay? Yeah, I mean, you can't be, just like you can't put them on-
Election is over.
Like, okay, so do we have-
That's what I mean, is it over?
Do we have-
When is it over now?
The authority to remove them X many days after it's over, or?
Again, as far as temporary signs go, because political signs are exempt from temporary signs, no.
So, they can stay up, so we can start putting our signs out for twenty twenty now?
I mean, we know how elections go, and it's starting already anyway, isn't it?
Right, but, I did, I guess I'm just looking for clarity, there is, there is-
The scary thing is, yes.
I mean, basically, that's what we have.
That's, that's basically what I have.
Can we address something to permission? Because what happens with most political signs is they get stuck on all the empty lots and spaces throughout the village. A lot of them, easement, but not necessarily easement, um. Do they have to have some kind of sign permission to be sticking and leaving, or then do we have the ability to remove?
I have a question, and I'm gonna tap on the dot, and I mean, what you're saying, can the village remove them from village property?
Yeah, absolutely, there's no reason why a private citizen should be putting them on, on public, on a village. Yeah, I mean, that's a different situation entirely, but-
So, if they're on easements and, and whatnot, they can't be removed?
The, the main reason why we cannot regulate political signs, even outside of this twenty fifteen Supreme Court decision, is that temporary, as a temporary signs, because temporary signs are required, you're required to come to the village and get a permit. Prior restraint forecloses that. Prior restraint being, you can't go ask the government to then express your political views about the government.
Okay, and then there's no limitation on size?
Um, as far as those go, I mean, we've all seen the gigantic signs.
Right.
Um, I don't know how much it would qualify as a banner, depending on the size of it, so we might be able to, again, there's time, place, and manner, and manner goes to the size.
Like, we had, for example, we had, you know, we had a sign placed downtown, um, it was just personally made, probably about thirty by thirty, maybe, for those that remember it, and-
Was it?
It was the Trump, gosh, I hate this, it was vulgar, um, and so, but it was just sort of a man-made sign, thirty by thirty, and it was there. Um, is that something that you can just throw up a piece of wood and write whatever you want on it, is, is political?
Again, some of the, some of the time, place, and manner restrictions under the prohibited sign sections of, of this ordinance will, will foreclose the ability of people to do that.
Okay, so it'll just be a case by case?
Yeah, it really will be.
Okay.
Maybe under the definition of banners, it should extend to other materials that are temporary in nature, like a coroplast, um, you know, not just a, you know, what someone typically thinks is a banner, they can roll it up, that it should be the materials, because with that, we can regulate, um, those type of things.
Can you regulate materials on a political sign?
We haven't put that in there.
Is it?
But we, we cannot, we cannot say that it's political sign, so we'd have to write it in another way.
Yeah.
Like you're saying, Rob.
And that's what I'm saying, the definition under-
Yes, that way we could do it, so there's a workaround for it, but-
Yeah, you just can't specify, political signs can't be X way.
Yes.
Okay, it would have to be, no, all signs cannot be made out of whatever material.
Yeah, I'm catching the drift.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know. So, that's, um, um, as far as your question about permission, I know that there are other municipalities, uh, I'm thinking specifically of Sterling Heights, that had a ordinance in place where somebody had the, the owner of the property had to sign a document saying that he permitted the sign on this property. I don't know if we can still do that or not, but I'll look into it for you to find out if that's still permissible, so that people can't just throw them up everywhere, right? And then say, yeah, go ahead, take them down, and then, you know, I'm coming after you for taking down my political sign.
Yeah.
Um, it's obviously, uh, it's difficult, I mean, because somebody's gonna have to go through and say, okay, there's, you know, Tom Jones is on, you know, too many.
I have to be honest, I see that as being an office nightmare.
Yes, and then it is, and it's, uh, you know, it is-
The office nightmare would only probably come into effect after the election, and we need to clean up the place, you know what I mean?
That's a lot of, that's a lot of-
It's, and then you have, you know, the-
You figure everybody who puts a political sign in their yard has to come through here and say it's okay?
I don't know, not necessarily say it's okay, you, they have to have, uh, a sheet of paper. Said, Tom Jones, I put it at two Main Street, and here the owner of two Main Street said it was okay that I could do it. Now, you can collect them all, and you never look at them until someone says, hey, did Tom Jones have permission to put a sign there? You look through and see if he has one. Again, I don't know if we can do that or not, it's something that I have to look into, I know other municipalities have done it that way, that it does sound like a nightmare to me, but I'm just throwing it out there to you guys that I, I have seen it before.
Well, in most ordinances, it would be there when we need it to clean up. Not necessarily be something we'd be chasing around all day-
Right.
Until it became a problem, and it's time to get rid of this stuff.
Yeah.
January, and we still got this corner full of signs. I mean, I, I don't understand why someone puts a sign in a vacant lot anyways, because to me, that's just literate, I'm like, who's the guy anyways, or who?
Yeah, but it's not like that, it's, you know, it's the-
Signs now.
You're responsible for your own sign?
Like, just in this general, typically after election, a day or two, they're all gone, so do we?
No, you see DPW out there cleaning up.
Or like the actual person who ran, like their team, I don't, I just noticed one day they're all gone.
Yeah, that's what's supposed to happen.
There's, they usually have a ten days, seven, ten?
I think the current, the current ordinance says five.
Five, so.
But we don't have that in there anymore.
But no, we can't do anything, because they can leave them out there for the next election.
So, I guess they're looking for some way to clean up temporary signs.
Everyone is.
Okay.
And it's, and it's really on a trial basis, because nobody knows what's gonna be permissible and what's not gonna be until somebody takes, and we get it, some sort of ruling from a court or a judge, saying that, yeah, it's okay to say this because of nuisance, or because of whatever, but right now, it's-
I'm sure twenty twenty will-
Somebody will-
Come on, leave their sign up if they lost.
Oh, I've seen a few, those are the ones that leave them.
They still lose it, you know?
See, DuCock is one of the sickest.
They live in the fly.
I mean, I haven't seen a Gore, Clinton, or Bush sign recently, but, you know. I had my, uh, my Gore sign on my roof, um, till the election was decided.
On the, that can-
Back in two thousand.
Two thousand.
And it was a-
All right, okay.
Very large, but there was an ordinance, you know, they agreed that once the election was over, and that's what the wording was, once the election was over.
Right.
So, everybody else is taken out?
So, guys, leave.
It's, and all the, do all of their cities have taken out temporarily?
Many are, and the processes are going.
So, they're waiting to see who's gonna, who's gonna strike first and put something in?
So, we're eliminated for the, for the purpose of not being sued, right?
Well, no, well, you're eliminated to comply with what the law is, and the law right now is you can't, you can't regulate it. That's the law, I mean, you're, you're just coming into conformity with what the law is. Can you, can someone craft something that another judge says is okay, that, that's the big question.
Can I ask one more question on message? Is there a way to eliminate, um, like, are we strong enough there, if it's possible to eliminate, like, vulgarity and stuff like that?
Yeah, you can eliminate, you can't, it's- That, that's a, that's a separate case, L of D California nineteen seventy-three, the, the definition of obscenity, you know it when you see it, if you ever heard of this, right? So, there, there is a spot in this ordinance about regulating sexuality and obscenity, and we actually, I looked at it in addition to this other content-based regulation work, and said we should change the language of that a little bit, and just have the definition of obscene as quoted in that Supreme Court decision and leave it at that.
Okay.
That way, we're completely covered as far as the law goes, and-
Oh, so you're gonna add the quote?
Yeah.
Okay, because I did see what you're talking about, it is in there somewhere, I forget, I saw it.
yeah
but it doesn't say anything about quoting that
no I think I I put the language in there but I didn't directly quote it so I have to look back and make sure
um
I have one more question on message in fact like similar to the vulgarity obscenity and stuff is there anything there that mandates like a hate speech or anything like that can it be or no
no it sounds like content based to me
again it would be case by case
I mean just for example you see the you know protests for homosexuality or whatever is there anything there you know obviously they can do what they want so
Supreme Court has upheld several years ago that you know people could protest at at that soldier's funeral as long as you know the time
can they protest I guess my question is can they protest with signs
I don't think yeah I don't think you can stop it it's content based yeah
alright
well we do have restrictions on size like say in a residential neighborhood will that count as a political sign if someone's sticking a four by eight on their front lawn because we do not allow we're not we're not saying you can't put a sign we're just saying you can't put a four by eight because our ordinance is such such a sign you could put whatever you want on a sign but it just can't be you know
yeah it's time place matter I mean it's like anything else I mean it follows the provisions of the zoning ordinance
okay
as long as you don't specifically say political signs can't be this big
no we're saying in residential areas a sign I think can only be four square feet
yeah that's it yeah that's it that's how you keep those ridiculous
I mean because who knows what croaky things will go on and some will you know got a whole lot of four by eight signs applied within all of a sudden
yep
when it comes to politics you can't think about it you can't even come up with something like come up with
probably a true statement
um the definition of a pylon sign is still in there even though we we don't allow pylon signs right we're just saying so that they know what a pylon sign is when we're saying hey
exactly
um a roof sign I thought we had talked well maybe you know about not having roof signs
we had actually we had actually discussed that and
but there but the definition is still in here but I did not go back and look for it being able to be put in so I didn't know what I didn't I didn't have time to go back and look to see if roof signs were removed from the law of signs
okay I thought that was
I believe that I believe we struck it Rob but let me let me go back through your look
I just saw the definition was still there and since some definitions were missing and others weren't that's why I'm asking the question
do we have a height restriction on a wall sign do you know
did you put in a height restriction on a wall sign
I don't recall I mean I didn't mess with it that much as far as we were
there is something about being so many feet from the ground
as was the shirt because it talked about being I don't know what inches outward from the wall but it didn't say anything about the height
I believe we do have language in there that says it cannot exceed the parapet of the building
I mean because if that would if it if it did it would almost turn into a banner sign
correct I mean it starts
um yes the H two what is it section seven it's seven H two yeah
I'm not sure about the roof line yet a little bit it's in G two as well
okay
there's one other thing I just bring up above which I thought might be
well Rob so can does anybody else have any other questions
dangerous
Rachel good
I have a general question just in terms of temporary signs in terms of location if um this is actually I've been asking for another community in this one it's funny you guys here pick your brains um question being is if a temporary sign or a banner is of a certain size can a community say I can have a you can have a larger sized banner if you're on this type of a thoroughfare which is larger right of way so we're talking about larger setbacks and faster sweeps could I have a different banner size on grass that I could have in my other community I'm not changing the content but I am giving it precedence because it's a little bit larger but the idea is it's more visible
as long as you're not giving precedence on the basis of content
okay
it's fine right Paul
because they can put whatever they want on it
yeah
okay
are schools still exempt from our sign ordinance
yeah we didn't change anything about that as far as I know so
because the only reason I you know sometimes a school gets an award and they put a big banner up you know stating they're a Blue Ribbon School or this kind of school or and you know if New Haven gets one of them I want it up I want it you know I want to be able to see it the other thing I was concerned on safety was banners we're allowing banners item six item seven that we can put them in between or hang them from street poles and or from the light posts and such
no we're basically saying that if a person has poles or something that's on their site that's their private property and they want to tie it between and they can but they're prohibited from using any utility or pole that is owned by the village so they can't string it across Main without permission we wouldn't allow it but
from personal experience um I was in the sign business and somebody did put their banner on their light post and during a nice wind it got the light post down um damaging the car they were coming after me because I made the map like I had something they were putting it up but you know when you go to sue somebody you're trying to sue them for everything you can but I don't know if that's a great place to as far as it being secure enough to handle it and then there's an issue that
I would not want to remove that because then you're taking away
well you have the ability to put stakes in the ground to put your banner on not using items that are you know
I mean but then you're
thirty feet high that could go through and slice loose
it says sign poles in here so you're taking the stakes so I have to take away the sign pole
well it says light poles I mean the light poles I'm objecting to not sign poles per se you know you could put stakes in the ground and put your sign up and and whatever I'm just saying hanging them off their um off their actual lighting posts that are thirty feet near and if someone comes down it could definitely in my case it only damaged vehicles but it could hit somebody so I thought it should be removed light poles for safety
what was that one uh what's the number on that
um just above section eight which is the uh the grid item number seven
of banners
yeah banners may be connected to onsite light poles sign poles and or buildings
so you just want to take out light poles
light poles specifically
that's fine it's fine anybody else good okay
yeah um so are associations exempt from some of the requirements handed down by the Supreme Court which especially in regards to temporary signs political signs can associations being set up private set you have to have them removed from your property within five days ten days after the election
is that like like it's on signs
set stricter rules on signs and associations
I don't see why not I mean they they can make their own when they're in association we as
right that's why I'm not sure that if it
but I'm up in in association meaning that yeah as an association you can okay
I thought it read differently in the ordinance that's the village sign ordinance was the um you know you couldn't go beyond what the sign ordinance prohibits I thought I wrote that there was any language like that in there
that that probably only would be for them putting up banners and things like that they can't they can't say in an association you can put up a fifty foot banner because the village only allows thirty foot okay like you were saying before they can't extrapolate make it bigger and say oh we're an association we're gonna go bigger than what the what the village has on their own you can't extrapolate larger than that but in terms of when you're dealing with like content time place and manner like we talked about they can say is our community we want to keep our keep it clean our association says five days after the election you gotta have it down if you don't have it down you know if the association can come take it down at your expense nothing we can do about that and that's they're their own governing body at that point but I think what you're talking about what's probably in there is the expansion you can't go more than what the village allows so if the village says thirty the association can't say yeah we know the village says thirty but we as an association say fifty so we're good you can't you can't expand it
but we're seeing the associations can do
they can be more restrictive
be more restrictive they can do equal to what the
yeah they can do equal to or more more restrictive
I think that was challenged in court too because they were saying like you don't only have a flag or no flag or American flag or
they're not a governmental entity so they they can do and make and
they can if they want
right I mean you can't obviously free speed you get in all that stuff but as far as an association goes you can be more restrictive for sure
did you think it was in here I'm skipping through I guess I didn't come across but that would make sense what you're saying
and I thought it was actually the opposite that you know it couldn't I mean I I I didn't I don't see where I left the note so I might have skipped writing a note there but I there is a note that I did skip under section five um it's actually just at the end of five just above six it says that um it gives a time of within ten years from adoption of this chapter um can we put in there something about previous chapters because I don't want to reset the clock and everybody that has a nonconforming sign ten years from this ordinance you know what I mean
why are you talking about that
um
you're talking about section P here nonconforming signs
and then we get at the very end it says structure or land within ten years from the adoption of this chapter to me that says it resets the clock for everything that's currently up you know once we approve this that maybe not conforming or damaged or you know times up because this was in the previous ordinance um you know the timeframes are I don't want to reset the clock I guess is the way I look at it
do we know many specifically that we're got the clock on
I mean I have a list um of what I think is in violation but you know I don't know what the list is at the moment we haven't had anybody to give it to in so long that uh but yeah there's not conforming signs out there all the um pylons signs will now be nonconforming with this ordinance
but if they haven't been notified they're not conforming are they on a clock to begin with
well the ordinance states the the timeframe because it would have said it said in the previous you know within ten years from the adoption of this chapter so that thing is ten years old now so whatever
but if I I'm with Rachel if they've never been notified that they're not compliant I mean what we would literally need to do is document that they're not compliant today and talk to them in ten years there's nothing to say we can't go backwards and say it's already been like that for five years you only have five more I mean they get ten I mean from when they're notified there's nothing we can run it out would you agree
oh you definitely have to give a note for sure
yeah
why didn't they put the sign up within the ordinance previous to that
I I think if you have concerns is you know we have Dan in place now and you give him your list he goes around and
well that's I mean there hasn't been a Dan in a long time
right and but at least you know you start the clock but I don't it's I think it'd be a stretch to believe the clock has been started in this here at all I doubt there's any documentation on that for that in my opinion
but does this doc this document setting that clock right
not if they haven't been notified I think you gotta let them know
well do we even have to put ten years in there
yeah we're gonna give them time to fly
but it means we have to make it ten years is there is there a reason it's that number
I don't know no I think that was just previously done I don't know that
what's reasonable number in your opinion if you're asking like someone
I mean that that's really kind of up to you guys and your how you want to do it and force it against your people I mean that's I don't know that there's a right answer or rhyme or reason to it I mean obviously ten years is a lot so you know I I I don't think there would be much of an objection moving down but you know what the right number is yeah that's that's gonna be up to you guys and how you want to do it
I mean especially I guess what would be useful is the sign becomes in disrepair and you have the ability to repair a sign under the ordinance but if it's nonconforming and not um you know up to our current standards um you know are we gonna make it last ten years just seems like a heck of a long time to get get rid of something
you could say four after the election presidential yes four years I ten does seem like a lot I might look up would be that they had ten years in place because they just thought strongly about all these regulations that they put forth that they figured ten years ought to do it
one thing I would like to perhaps add to that is ten year you know whatever number we we suggest but and or at the transfer of property that way whenever someone else is moving in they're obligated to comply and I I think ten years is reasonable I mean it does seem like a long time but it's a huge investment but you know people like Frosty for example is you know they just transferred their property we could have at that time addressed it
well it's almost the same thing about us having pylon signs and monument signs
mhm
all people with the pylon signs are now basically grandfather
yeah so can we do that add that part the transfer of property is that possible
that's a good idea
I I'm fine with the ten years I mean if you wanted if you want to ask if anybody else wants to change it that's fine
I mean I
I think ten years is a long time
I was trying to think of a reason why we would
it is an investment
give them ten years
yeah why why would we change it I can't think of one but maybe it's just put from different cities having different you know experiences I can't think of any other reason to to change it from ten to two or four
that was another thing I noticed is that enforcement of the signs is limited to the um building inspector um and I thought that we should add code enforcement into that so that they can get the ball rolling of course anything has to be done to it change wise and things
yeah that's a good idea
code enforcement officers ability to assess it but if there's a violation I think he should be able to to get the ball rolling
he has been doing signs
yeah
and he's out yeah I mean
the ordinance isn't written that way
can we just include that
sure
thank you
it just says the sign the administrator and it's that in there
okay anybody else Mr. Vitalik
I don't know
Mr. Song and Rachel you're good alright now with all that being said and done do we set the public hearing or do we wait another month for the changes Jack
uh I guess it would be up to you guys and what you would be able to affect those changes and get it back
I can have it done by the Monday
I would say once we set the public hearing we have to have all the materials available for the public to review both on the website and then a copy here at the office so once we have that in hand we we know we have that in hand and we feel comfortable setting it
so hold off on it till next month to set it or set it for next month
I would set it next month
but the other drafts we haven't gotten the final copy of those to read
we have had
everyone we we've everyone's received those
months like those administrative ones
I know but we did them and mentioned changes but never got the final draft of them I mentioned it at the last meeting I wanted those so that I could read them all month remember I asked if you could do it right away so I could read it all month
I do read I thought I I apologize I thought you were just referring to the signs because I thought about how you had distributed all of the other final drafts of all of those items um I can send them out tonight I mean I have them all back at the office can send them out to kitchen get them to you guys tonight if you want to if you want to read through them um
would we be in on time for you Rob Would we be in on time for your round?
Yeah. You know, the summary, like with the doc, with the, with the net random, that was just an attempt to try to streamline it and just provide a summary of all of the changes that I had.
So if you can get them tonight, you'll be good with the hearing?
Uh, following Monday.
Yeah, is, is that something, are you good to get it out tonight?
I give it out tonight, yes, exactly.
So that everyone gives their input and opinion, I'll just email them to everybody then?
I've, I've already contributed mine. Rachel, you're new, so you haven't had a chance to review them. Craig, you're new, so you haven't had a chance. Steve, you've reviewed them already.
It's, it's your best call.
Rachel, do you want more time to review them?
I just realized that Tracy had forwarded to me.
Okay.
So I do have the proposed change because I just haven't read through it.
All right, would you be comfortable with a public hearing next month or would you like some extra time?
No, I'd be comfortable with this one.
Okay.
No, I'd rather give all my time.
Next month or would you rather?
No, next month, yeah.
You're good with the public hearing, you said, to review it at that time?
But based on what you just said with the other people, if we have changes done, we can make them at that meeting anyways, right? It'll be, they don't have to be exact at, at the public hearing.
You're setting a public hearing to get, to get input from the public. You may hear something from them, but you may want to change. You have the ability to take that next month and make that change. And then ultimately, you'll be voting to or agreeing to pass a recommendation on council to approve. So yeah, there's nothing that's set, there's nothing that's set in the clock saying, hey, after that public hearing, we have to, we have to vote. We have to, our vote will decide at that point in time.
We'll take another month after that. So at the next meeting, everybody can still get their input so that we can go back and forth with it and say yes, no, take an opinion or move forward, don't move forward.
Yeah, it should be pretty finalized by then. I mean, unless adjusted public.
Unless you just get some showstopper that comes out of the public that you guys want to address, you know? But if there are, if there are tweaks or changes, I mean, those can be, we can cook shit ahead of time, it all depends on how you guys want to streamline it. Are you discussing it at the next meeting?
Discuss it at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll see this, and motions for a public hearing for next month.
So...
I'm going to, more specific, May 7, 2019, we'll say at 7:30, because every other one is seven.
Can we start and vote? There is Mike, not less than minutes?
Let me just say 7:15. We can do 7:15. 7:15. General Administrative, Heavy Light Industrial Office Districts, Planted Development, Overlay Districts, and Sign Ordinance, Ordinance Review. All fair? Any opposed? So a public hearing set for May 7, 2019, for the ordinance review.
Okay, Rob, just as a point of, as I send this up, the, the Light, Heavy, Industrial Ordinance Districts, there's technically no change in the text. Will be just changed plus the schedule of regulations, which is the table that's set that, the height, the, the building lot coverage. So all of those changes that are there are just reflected on that one sheet. So when you get that, you'll see that, and that'll cover points one through four that are on here. They're all just directional changes that we're looking at. It's really the PUD and the size that actually makes total changes.
But you're going to send them in there?
I'll send all of them.
You know, irony in the PDM.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, this is master plan. Jeff?
Before, before, to keep the meeting moving forward, I did meet with, today I was able to meet with President Dilbert and DPW in fire. I provided those guys copies of the master plan document, which you guys all have in front of you. I brought copies tonight, I don't remember if everyone received a paper copy. The, the task or the homework that I asked them to do was to read through this document, look at the goals and objectives for each of the individual planning areas. This document broken up into residential districts, industrial districts, commercial districts, and there were goals and objectives set for those. Asked them to take a look at that, see what, if any of these things have been accomplished, elements that should be struck that haven't, aren't going to happen. And also asked, particularly DPW, to let us know if there are any impediments to future development. Like I gave them the example, if someone were to come to us with a proposal for the, the commercial property, you know, the triangle property they were talking about, do we have the water and sewer capacity there to support a development and to what level? So asking for those elements, they indicated that they do want to include the capital improvements plan that they're developing ultimately in this document, because that can tie bar a lot of these initiatives together. So basically what I have, what I wanted to do tonight, and I didn't have staff, I didn't have time this morning, was to go through the individual character areas that are in the plan and just have a general discussion of the goals and objectives that were outlined before to see, do these still resonate, are these things, things we're still pursuing? There are a couple of items in terms of some zoning changes that were made, that were recommendations that have come to fruition. We can take those off the list. But what I would, what I'd like to do for next month is, we're going to have these public hearings. I'd like to bring those folks in, but then just have an open discussion of you guys taking a look at the documents. I know that everyone's had an opportunity to read through it. Take a look at the, take a look at the individual areas, look at the goals and recommendations. And if we could have just an open discussion about those items. I have been making a list myself as we've been going over the last year and a half of things I think that should change in some of our districts. I'm willing to share those with you. Some of them become some zoning tweaks, some things are more of a philosophical, what do we want to see in this area? So with, with that, I think we just, I'd like to, this is just an update document this time, or I should say, this is just an update to the plan that we're doing this time, it's not a major right. So I guess with that, I'd like to just have a general open discussion about the elements that are in here. Some of the, you know, get your guys' opinions on what makes sense. I know that when we went through this last time, there was a discussion, you know, a large discussion was focused on, what can we put in the master plan or in the zoning ordinance to try to help revitalize the downtown, the downtown district section? We made changes, but the accounting, no one's, no one's bad on us. But we do have the ability in here to have higher density development, we've increased the floor space. There were suggestions that were made there. If there's other ideas or a different direction we want to go, or you guys have thoughts on that, I'd like to just have a discussion about that, because it's really not up to us as the planner to say, this is what the community should look like. We need the input from you guys. I also expressed to Chris, as we get further into this process where we are starting to go through the goals and objectives and redefine a new set of those, I think there's a point in time where we want to be able to engage council. That could be either through a presentation to council of what we've come up with so far. Or it could just be a general invitation to council members if they want to attend a workshop here at the Planning Mission Meeting, to get their solicitorical as well, because ultimately they're the ones who are going to be approving. They would be ultimately the ones who are approving the legislative items like the zoning ordinance changes. So that we go to them a year and a half from now and say, we want to change zoning in general business to be able to have a special land use that handles propane tank sales, because that's something we don't have in the village, it's causing some issues right now. They'll understand why, it's been part of the plan, we've discussed it, and we can, you know, hopefully get those changes put through relatively easily. But I think that we can include them in the process, that would be helpful.
Okay, so...
If you guys have any questions about the process or about the plan or, you know, I'd be happy to try to answer those. You know, just the general idea, the plan is supposed to be, you know, in theory, it's a guiding document for the village to set the tone for future development, addressing the current development that we have. And then also try and intertwine that with a capital improvements project, a capital improvements plan, that makes sense. I know that the community is looking to do street improvements in terms of, there's paving issues out there. We'll give more information from DPW on what that looks like and what, you know, what that schedule may look like going out one, two, three, four, five years in the future. And then additionally, if we find that, we might have, we hear a report back from them that there are some areas that maybe have deficiencies that would be an impediment to development, then potentially if we're looking at additional commercial development, I'm just theoretically saying in certain areas, Long Rash or 26, if improvements or utilities need to be made, this document can call that out and give a guideline saying, if we want to develop with this, these are one of the steps the village is going to have to take, maybe to increase water capacity to an area. And that's, that's the spirit of what we're trying to do here. I think unfortunately, the last time around, we, we spent a lot of time getting the plan out, but then we didn't really have, I would say the village did not necessarily use it then as a guiding moving forward. I think if we can explain that better to, to council and have this as a guiding document, it'll be a more effective document. And that's always a challenge with master plans. The thing we don't want to do is spend a lot of time on, you have to just sit on a shelf and correct us and say, that's five years later, dusted off again.
Okay, anybody any questions or do we want to just take them up, read it and review it? And maybe make a list of questions for next month?
Yeah, that'd be my...
Good? If you could, to Jeff, leave two behind, I'll throw one to Tracy, to Mel Ross, and then in case we get a new member.
Okay.
Can some of the, the data, you know, like I'm, I'm looking at page 38 and 39. Can we get the up-to-date data?
Absolutely.
Let's see the graph.
Yeah, in fact, my staff's already been working on, we've already, we've been compiling demographic data. All the changes to these elements will be, all the items that are in here that have been, excuse me, that have been noted in terms of housing, population, the income levels, all of that stuff will be refreshed. So we'll have, we'll have a new picture, a new snapshot of what it looked like.
And you'd like to know it before we work on the document? So that, working on the document, I'm using that data?
Not a problem. I can, I can bring that, I can bring that as a handout to the next meetings. I know most of those materials are already prepared. They just haven't been laid out or, or published or anything. We do all the law cases.
Okay, Gavin, I'd love it before bothering this document. I don't know if anybody noticed, but there's more traffic studies being done. I ran over quite a few.
Want to get something to do with the hospital, the medical center or whatever?
They requested?
I'm just curious, because I know it's that too.
Because businesses can request those studies to be done, right Jeff? You can contact the county to, hey, I want to know what the...
No, generally the way I, I, I may not be correct this, but I believe generally the, the ones who do the volume, where you're seeing the traffic volumes, is SEMCOM, the regional agency, they get, they get funding from MDA and then they go out and they've got a program where they try to do all the roads. Now, you may get us, you may have a community that wants to do a private traffic study. A lot of times they'll, they'll bring on their engineering firm, the engineering firm will lay those out. Depends on what it is. If, if, there's a whole host of reasons you can do it. You know, if you're looking at re-signalization of traffic signals, you may have MDA to lay them out there. But generally, if it's, if it's somebody who's business related or it's commercial, because they're trying to look at volumes, they're going to be doing that through somebody private. The county, as far as I know, does not provide those services to the pub, to the private sector.
It's something they got buy from?
They would have to, so you'd have to go to an engineering firm or traffic, traffic safety firm to do those things.
Because, I mean, they act it so regularly around here.
They're doing one on, you know, even wrote it nine before right now.
Most of the ones you've probably seen out there are probably being initiated from the traffic folks at McComb County Road. Because they'll, they do have counties, they do have county boxes, and then they do also hire people to do those. And a lot of those will be related to signal, most of it's related to signalization traffic studies, looking at the flow. We changed this light, put a left turn signal, they need to get those really specific counts for those intersections before they make those types of changes. But we do have update, I do, I will provide all the updated traffic, or at least the average daily volumes that are available currently for all future developers. So you have those questions, Rob?
Do you know, Jeff, on the, on the back, I was looking at the goals and objectives. It says, obviously ongoing, I know what it means, but long term and short term. Do you know how short or short?
What, what was, what we characterize, and it might be explained somewhere in the text. When we were looking at short term, that was within the life of the plan, one to five years.
Okay.
And then the long term would be one to 10 years, and then the ongoing is just... And, and in some cases, the, the long term could be up to 20 years too, meaning some of those are some long.
Yeah, so the...
But anything short term is just tried to, is trying, is trying to be accomplished within the lifetime of the act, and so within five years.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, new business, Ron? Banners report, you good?
I'm good.
Public comments on non-agenda items? A call from the table?
Nothing.
A adjournment, motion?
So moved.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, 8:26, adjourned.